In the special meeting, the Ellsworth Plating Board for May 19, 2023. Want to introduce ourselves?
Nelson Gill, member.
John DeLeo, Chair.
Rick Lyles, Vice Chair.
I'm Mike Hangy, an alternate, possibly having to vote tonight unless Mark shows up.
And I see one staff.
Hi, Matt Wimpsey.
Okay. Item number two, final plan review of a minor subdivision entitled Langley Rayless LLC for owner applicant Brian Langley. The proposal is create a triplex structure, creating a three dwelling unit structure subdivision. The subject property is approximately 1.2 acre lot located in 19 South Street, map 134, Lot 214-1 in the neighborhood zoning district. Someone here representing Brian, Brian is here.
Nick.
Name please.
Uh, Nicholas Ford.
Okay. We're here basically dealing with the paving issue.
Correct.
I'll open the floor to you guys.
I will speak on tape.
Yes, um, so, uh, at the last meeting, I apologize for, uh, for not being here. That, uh, the paving issue was a, a 100% total surprise. Hadn't heard, uh, a single thing about it. So I was, uh, not prepared at all for that. So it was, kind of threw us a tremendous curve ball. And so, um, in, so having a little time to go take a look at the issue, I started doing some heavy research into, uh, non-asphalt paving options, of which I think you have in your folders. Um, and I talked to quite a number of companies that I called and spent some time, um, to, to be able to find some options for a whole host of reasons. Um, not being a big fan of tire myself, um, certainly the, the location of where we are and with, um, uh, in heavy rainstorms and a lot of water, being the proximity of the river, um, a lot of water runs down the road and the, and the track of it takes it right down the road across one of my parking lots and down into the river. That's the natural run of water there. Um, and, uh, putting more water off of asphalt into the river was not something I really want to do. Uh, so I, I found an option which, um, I was actually very excited about and which you have in front of you are these, um, non-asphalt pavers, they call them, in which they, um, lay out on top of a, a base, um, of which, um, you put a, um, a base of, uh, much like you would underneath pavement, uh, but then stone and then these interlocking grids, which are, um, uh, have probably two inch kind of holes in them over stone and then backfill stone on top of that. And, uh, there were some questions about the amount of weight that they would hold, but, um, talking with the company, they put them in truckyards where 18 wheelers actually sit on them and so they don't, um, uh, so they'll, they'll hold. Um, and I think there's a lot of specs that I gave you to that. So, um, it's not cheap. Um, you know, by the time that they're, um, all installed and put in, um, by the time you pay for that, um, and, um, might take me, um, some, um, I can get those here, um, in a 10 day turnaround time. So I think I can have those done by the time our project is done. Um, installation is, uh, doesn't require, um, you know, specialized equipment other than the base work, putting with the groundwork and we can, when we finish the groundwork for the, the, the project as we were going to do, it's not a lot of additional work to put this, these pavers in. So, um, booking, um, people to come in and lay asphalt, I don't know if I would be able to get it done this summer, uh, trying to contract with companies. First reaction I had is I wouldn't be able to, um, wouldn't have been able to put those, probably put those in until maybe the end of the summer. So, um, so I think environmentally, I think this is really the way to go and, um, they'll take the snow. I talked to them quite a bit about that. You just have to, uh, lift your blade up a little bit off of them, um, which is what I have to do, uh, down near, um, my parking lots, down by the restaurant anyway, where I plow so I don't, you know, peel off the stone that I have down there. So, um, we're kind of used to doing that anyway. So, um, so that's, um, that's the paving option that I would like to go with.
I presume that, I mean, the, the information you got, I mean, the depth of these, what are these actually made out of?
Uh, they, they're recycled, 100% recycled plastic and, but they, they'll twist and they'll, they'll move and they interlock them in. I, I'm not an engineer, but the specs in there, they're, um, and they have an industrial, they have a homeowner style and then they have an industrial style. And I got the industrial one because, um, there was a, the concern was about weight from from.
An industrial style is deep enough.
Uh, I think it's the thickness of the, of the, of the sides. You know, they set into the, uh, three quarter inch stone and then they're down in there and then they're backfilled with half inch stone to fill those little pockets up. So they basically create a, a really hard surface. But it's all permeable.
Yeah.
So.
I think. So as I recall, the crux of the issue was that waiver was required to be extended by the fire chief. Is that?
Yeah, that's a, that's a, there's two, right? There's the paver stuff and then there's the firewall stuff.
Attorney General, so the, the idea behind this, um, Geo Mesh or whatever you want to call it is based upon the design of the individual squares and the PSI that they will take when driving across it. Some of them are rated at 6,000 pounds per, per square inch, some of them 8,000 pounds per square inch. And that's based upon the aggregate, the, the agate that's in, in the, um, the mesh and that which is underneath it as far as the, um, the subgrade and then basically the subbase. So it's, it's all relevant as far as how everything is put together. So if, and my memory serves me correct, I'm not sure if you had a chance to, to check with, um, there's a place in town that's using this right now, um, just right up here off of State Street, uh, Church Street, excuse me.
I know where you're talking about.
And it works very well. Um, and, um, in the process of doing that, it actually is an engineered design process. So I guess the question I have for you, Brian, is are these people who you're going to be getting this from going to be able to design this specifically for your site, come up with an engineered design as far as a subbase and the prepared subgrades so that you, whoever is going to do all that has something to go by? Because it's based upon individual site as to what you have for soils and things like that.
Well, I've worked with them and, and to follow all of the manufacturer's instructions. So we will, you know, we'll work with them to make sure we do it according to, um, to their, to their specifications.
Okay. Um, the, the documentation that we've got, um, specifically talks about, um, the base depth and preparation is dependent on site conditions plus loading requirements. So, um, I guess you'd have to get ahold of them or whatever and let them know what the type of soil is and what's going on with that so that they know what to do with the soil.
We're fortunate in that we have, you know, the groundwork that's being done is sort of all new stuff brought in.
Yep.
So it's all sort of fresh though. Um, what the Tracy Brothers have brought in, um, is, uh, is, is, is great base to begin with and then we'll follow the instructions to go on top of that. There's layers.
Correct.
And so we'll, we're working with Nick today. We've already, um, worked with the Tracy Brothers to follow those instructions.
So further on with, as I did some research, I looked at the different, um, designs and went right to this company, then right online. And there are different designs for different situations such as a parking lot or an RV parking lot. Uh, and then there's a specific for fire lanes and fire trucks. Um, the parking lot, RV parking lots and driveways and things of that nature uses a six inch subbase.
Mm-hmm.
For fire trucks, et cetera, it's an eight inch subbase. So that's something that probably needs to be addressed somewhere or somehow, you know, whoever's going to be doing this knows that those are the things that need to be addressed, whether it's through an engineered design or whatever. But those are things that need to be taken a look at and just throw gravel down in it. The other issue that I find with this and compared to the location here on State Street or Church Street is that these folks don't require a 95% compaction. They say that just using a rolling compactor or plate compactor and is going to be enough. So again, it's crucial that whoever does that is, knows what they're doing with that kind of stone, um, not just put it in. Because what's going to happen is it's going to give way if you end up driving on it back and forth a lot. So, you know, I remember when we were doing it up here that we paid careful attention to what went in and how it went in. So, um, it's just a matter of whoever does it needs to know what they're doing as far as a subbase and, and the, um, pre-subbase. So.
Well, we're at the, you know, we're at the beginning, uh, stages of this. This is the, the time and the place to do that, you know, instead of digging it up sometime later. So this is why we're doing it on, on the front end of this, um, when the ground is, you know, sort of all dug up anyways and hasn't been finished. So, um, so this is really the optimal time to do it.
Yep. I mean, it's an amazing product. I mean, there's no question about it.
Well, I'd never seen it before nor had I, but I just know that I'm just not a real big fan of tire. It just gets real hot and it cracks and it's hard to maintain and not in as environmentally friendly as it could be, so.
Yeah. These folks don't specifically tell you, they can say you can use a regular snowplow, but just lift it up with feet on a snowplow, individual foot. The other product says to use a rubber blade on the snow. I don't know that that's something that's an option.
Not really.
So, but anyway, um, but no, I, it's, it's a good pro, it's a good product. There's no question about it, so.
I'm going to follow up on the rule question, maybe, maybe for, for Matt. Correct my memory if, if it's wrong, but my understand, so I'm going to read this back and if I'm incorrect, you guys let me know. So the rule is because it's multi-dwelling, it's commercial, the rule is paved for commercial. The way to get around that rule would be a waiver, but the waiver in this context must come from the fire chief. That's what I understand from last meeting. Do I have that correct?
You do, um, but the waiver, they're not requesting a waiver anymore because of this product. Tom can speak to it, it is considered paving.
Okay. So, so this is what we're doing. We're offering this as a substitute, but like quality product as our paving would be. Okay.
So waiver is not necessary per se?
Correct. Yeah. Cause they're not waving paving, it's just not.
Right, they're not waving paving.
Yeah.
Well, that was going to be my question on, on the letter that you submitted, Tom, under three, that shall have a paved all weather driving surface. So based on that, I mean, this letter is okay or do we need an updated letter?
Cause they're still meeting the letter since this is considered paving, it's just porous paving.
And it's all weather, blah, blah, blah.
Correct. And the fact is that we discussed it here and it will be on the MyLars and that's, that's where that will fall off for my letter to that.
Okay. So the spirit of that rule clearly is that the fire department is comfortable with the surface so, for the trucks.
Correct.
So my next question is, Tom, are you comfortable with the surface for the trucks?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And that's why I had asked him to produce that information, to do the research, to then give the okay before this meeting to go, we're, we're comfortable moving forward with this product.
Okay. Thank you.
Brian, have you, have you thought about, uh, I mean, normally if there's a paved parking lot, uh, there'll be paint on the pavement for the parking, you know, parking spaces for the cars. Have you thought about using these little?
Yeah. I always, I think that excited me the most. They have the colored little, uh, dots that will stick down into the holes there so you can make lines and walkways. And then furthermore, on their website, um, they have, uh, plastic grids that'll snap on the top of those. So like leading up to the doorways, you can create a walkway on top of those. So somebody would like, you know, wouldn't be sticking high heels, for example, down through into the stone and in whatever. So whatever, you can flatten the top of those. Um, I was just, uh, really pleased with how, um, you know, um, they've taken, you know, recycled plastics and, you know, um, and I talked to the engineers quite a bit on the phone, um, you know, um, so it's a, a great option, I think. And then be one of those things as we go forward, you know, as other, it might catch on, you know, there's somebody else in town, as you'd set up the street, who's got it. And we, you know, again, it's the winter time, it's really going to be, um, where it takes. But, you know, frankly, when I order, um, this, I'll probably, just the way I am, I'll probably order a few extra to keep them around. So if something does happen and something gets peeled up or, or, you know, be able to snap another one in, you know, so you'll, you know, be able to repair them if something happens, you know, so rather than trying to re-tire or patch tire or all of that kind of stuff, so.
So would this process be something that Lori would be inspecting during installation?
Just like other roads, uh, Lori would inspect it. And I will be as well because it's part of my conditions as well. I'll be part of that inspection as well.
You bring a fire truck up and drive it on there and see if it works?
Yeah, see if it sinks in the ground.
Make sure it's a rainy day to get here early, adverse conditions.
I do know that the, um, material that has specifically for fire trucks that has this, and believe it or not, with a detail for, um, a grass top, for planting grass on top of it, um, that one specifically said that it met ADA requirements. I couldn't find that on just the gravel. So I don't know if, I would assume that it would be, but I can't say so. Um, I don't see where you'd have an issue as far as, cause it's not, the amount of gravel on top of these is not very thick. It's basically just a skin coat over top of it. It's not a whole lot because if it was a whole lot, he'd be plowing it up in piles in the winter time.
Right.
So I would assume that it's also ADA, but I couldn't find anything on there.
Any other questions from the board? No, there are one. We're on staff. And I'll open the public hearing. Would any ladies have a question or I know your neighbors?
Yeah, I just.
Come, come to the podium, introduce yourselves, please.
Kathy Young, 23, South Street. My question is, I heard Mike reference six feet versus eight feet.
No, inches.
Or whatever, inches. Um, I mean, I know that's a significant difference, but anyway, uh, is the requirement going to be for the fire truck eight inch standard? Like I haven't heard a requirement around, um, actually seeing a proposed engineer. I heard Brian say he would follow manufacturer's instruction. That's very different than actually requiring that you see a plan so that Lori can actually approve that it's been constructed according to plan, meeting engineering standards and following the right depths.
I would suspect and Tom can answer that it would be up to you to say for sure that, okay, this has got to be six inches or this has got to be eight inches or whatever the design needs to be.
If the manufacturer's recommendation for fire trucks is eight inches and it's right in their, right in their listing. So that's where we would be up there, you know, watching essentially from the start of making sure that they have the eight inches.
Yep.
You know, through their entire, through the entire process.
Okay. And it sounds like that's what their plan is.
Yeah, and that's the easiest thing for us to get to the, the folks that are doing the groundwork. We just take, you know, the specs that they, that they've given us and, and that's what they'll, that'll be the instructions we give them, so.
Do you have any, any sense of how much the runoff is reduced by this versus?
Oh, they have the numbers in there. It's astronomical.
It's amazing.
Yeah.
I mean, I would say, I, that's, is what I would expect, but I don't see it.
Oh, yeah. It's an astronomical amount of water that comes running down that hill.
Anything else, ladies? Okay. Close the public hearing.
I'm curious, do they, do they warranty these installations? So if they come out, engineer it, build it and then, and then there is a problem, do they have any liability?
No, no, we're in, in charge of the installation. Um, totally. And I haven't looked, um, about the actual product itself, you know, how long that's, they'll warranty the life of the, of the product itself, but, you know, they send, uh, they'll ship it up on a, on a, you know, an 18 wheeler, they'll ship it up to us and then we're in charge of installing it, you know, based on their, on their specs.
So is the, the engineering, the actual engineering design, so whether it's eight inches, 10 inches, whatever it needs to be for the specific conditions of the site, uh, is, again, is that a third party subcontract that's going to do that design for you or is it these guys?
Uh, these are going to be the guys I work with.
The true grid folks.
Yeah.
And that's mostly what I'm referring to. You're kind of linking these two things together. So if they do the engineering design and they say eight inches is good and it turns out it's not and you needed 12 inches, that, um, just curious if there's any way for you to go back to them and say, hey, the design was bad.
You know, I had run down that road because I didn't know that question to ask. I'll check with them. That'd be a good question to ask.
This is not, I mean, it's, conceptually it's not much different than having a paving guy come in and do the paving.
Right.
Versus having someone.
We just haven't seen these.
It's just a different, different stuff that's being put down.
Cause that, cause that's what, as I read that, that's, that's sort of the design is, you know, up until, you know, the, the base of it's very much like you were going to put the paving over the top of it, that kind of subwork is very much like that, um, like the paving, but you're putting these on the top.
But anyways, but the point is all the procedures for the design and placement and so forth are, I mean, they're just absolutely parallel to, uh, to, to a regular paved lot.
Yeah.
And this is really notwithstanding the fire trucks. I mean, this is a pretty low impact land use for, for the paved surface.
Right.
So, part of the fire trucks themselves.
So I think ultimately a condition of approval would be when Brian goes get those final plans, he's to share them with myself and Tom and Lori and me look them over and make sure they check out.
Does that have to be a condition for approval or is it just run-of-the-mill stuff?
Well, I'd say if, if you want me involved, it's a condition, but Tom and, or Tom and Lori are going to do it anyway, so.
As, as per normal.
Right, per normal.
Yeah. If we're treating it as a substitute for paving, they would be inspecting the paving anyway.
Right, yeah. So I don't just need for what you said.
I don't know anything about roads, so.
Flat or the better.
In the landing, there is a ship for road design, so this would be no different.
Right, exactly.
And they have to inspect it anyway.
So whatever that procedure is and whoever goes out there and wanders around and pokes the tires or whatever, I mean, it's, it is what it is. Same stuff. I mean, same process.
Yes.
Someone got a motion?
Well, are we going to talk about firewalls?
I hope so.
No? Okay.
So you're good with that?
I'm good with it.
Okay. Um, I have to go on record and say I'm not.
Okay.
Okay? Um, I, I, I will just say that, um, knowing that this city, this city, City of Ellsworth has adopted one-on-one life safety code and that there is a, um, conflict between the building code and the one-on-one life safety code, um, and even though the attorney general says it's something that probably wouldn't be won in court, um, that still doesn't alleviate the issue of safety, um, in a building. And I basically, now that Mark is here, I don't have to worry about it because he can vote. But, um, I'll just state my opinion that.
Oh, you're voting still.
Huh?
You're still voting.
I am?
Just three, four, five.
Oh, okay. I guess I still am voting. Um, so, but the issue becomes that, um, regardless of whether it's sprinkled or putting a firewall in, the one-on-one life safety code identifies, um, a unit that's three or more as an apartment. And new apartments basically are required to be sprinkled over the firewall by one-on-one life safety. Building code, I understand, does not, but we have to enforce both of those codes in the City of Ellsworth, so.
I think it's just worth stating that, I won't say, you know, as Tom, he's okay with it, but staff was instructed by the state not to push the issue.
Yes, I understand that, that they're not to push it.
I mean, was there anything from the state in writing or is this all verbal?
All verbal, from what I understand.
Yeah, I did not reach out to the state, but Tom told me, sent me an email, the fire marshal told him, and that's what the AG told fire marshal.
So you have official word from both of those agencies and it is what it is.
That would've been, it would've been nicer if they actually put something in writing.
I mean, I can try, but I apologize, I was pretty busy.
I've been trying to. I do have it, emails and writing. I mean, I want something on record for you guys, but I have the Richard McCarthy and there's the state fire marshal and, um, John E Baker, who's the staff planning examiner for PFS, which is the engineering firm, so.
So those emails are from those guys specifically?
Correct, the correspondence.
As opposed to the thing that was on the thing, which is, he said, she said, kind of a total.
And what, what do those say?
Um, can, uh, please see the attached regulations for main state manufactured housing board, chapter 110, state certification of modular homes. These are regulations that are required for the main state housing act, page five, which I have here, outline the definitions of a townhouse under these regulations, which is applicable for this project Apex, um, serial number 17749, which is the project name. Under the act, section 10, subsection two, section one E, page seven of the PDF file, provides the amendment, amendment to the 2015 IRC for townhouses, fire separations, constructions. Reference to section R302-1 rating for exterior walls. This section is unamended and requires a one hour wall where a minimum of five, um, feet fire separation distance. You are using a one hour WP8105 wall on each module, which satisfies this requirement.
Now, who was that from again?
That is from correspondence between John E Baker, staff planning examiner with PFS Corporation out of Bloomsburg, PA, and Richard McCarthy, state fire marshal, 45 Commerce Tribe of Estes.
That is, and everything they say is correct, but the thing that they, the thing that they quote is the IRC, the International Residential Code. They do not quote the life safety code, one-on-one life safety code in there at all. And that's what my, 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 my issue is, is that the City of Ellsworth specifically has to enforce the one-on-one life safety code as well as the building code. So one conflicts with the other, one is more stringent than the other, but what they're saying is that the one-on-one life safety code is going to take a backseat to everything and that the IRC basically stands, stands in its place and that's where, that's where you are right now. Um, I have a hard time with that because that means we are leaving one code completely out versus, versus another. So, and, 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 and I get it. I understand what they're trying to do, um, but to me, um, it's a safety issue, um, always has been and I have a hard time with that, so. But I, you have, you have to agree with what the state agencies are going by. If they say it's okay to do it, then according to them, it's okay to do it.
It might be, as an aside, it might be useful for staff to try to get this.
This is actually, I know.
Clarified.
I know Rich McCarthy, who is the state fire marshal's office, is dealing with this issue right now.
And clarifying it?
At, at the government level.
Okay.
Okay?
So if that's happening, then never mind.
So, but those two, what you have there needs to be part of the permanent record.
Yeah, should just vote on that then, um, to accept that. You have to make a vote.
Yeah, part of, part of your motion.
Yeah, for sure.
Would it be prudent to have those, I mean, you have copies of those?
No, but so if you vote to keep it in, I mean, they make copies of it.
Okay. I wouldn't, I don't understand most of them. I wouldn't, I don't understand most of it, but I wouldn't mind leaving it, but would it be prudent to say, to put those on the MyLar?
Um, I can certainly, yeah, I mean, you can put it on the MyLar, or find a way to reference it on the MyLar.
Might not be a bad idea. I think it's a good idea.
It was just a matter of putting that on the MyLar.
Yeah.
Now, I just envision something down the road saying, well, you let him do it, why can't I do it?
Right, well, just at the time of this approval, which, whatever date it is it's signed on, I'll highlight whatever the email says.
Yeah, but what's obvious today may not be obvious seven years from now with whoever's sitting here.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not going to sit here and fight with the Attorney General by no means.
Really? But, but these things really don't, while they, they should be in the MyLar, there's, it's not really a condition to approval per se.
No, it's just a note on the plan.
Just a note on the?
Yeah.
Tom is just thinking about our motion, and our motion doesn't really actually need to speak to that, I don't think, right?
No, it, uh, again, I mean, staff was recommended by the state not to push it, so.
Okay. So, do you want, we're going to put those on the MyLar in the motion?
So, first, you should vote to accept the addition to the application, so if you're willing to accept, uh, these specific emails, uh, to the public record, you have to vote on that, and then you make your motion to vote on the, or if you're ready, you can make a motion to vote on the project. Does that make sense?
Sure.
No, first step to the end step.
So, so the first step is a motion to.
To accept.
Accept that information?
Yes.
Is, is there a good name for that information?
I would say the email correspondence is between the, uh, third-party constructor of the modular home and the, the main state fire marshal discussing the.
Okay, so I'm going to reference what you just said as opposed to actually saying it myself.
Third party or applicant?
Third party. Third party.
Okay. So, we make, I make a motion to accept this material as an amendment to the application.
Yes.
There you go.
Second.
Long paper. So, now is there another motion you want?
Yeah.
Well, now that you've accepted this, if you have more questions or you can continue discussing.
Now, you can accept the final plan.
Okay.
Okay.
I guess I'm going to.
You're on a roll.
Yeah, well, it's going to be, it's going to be his turn, I don't think he wants to do that. Okay, I make the motion to accept the fin, uh, yeah, accept the final plan, review of the monitor subdivision entitled Langley slash Radlers LLC for owner-applicant Brian Langley.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all day long. Opposed? Okay. We're done?
This is, we're not friends anymore?
Absolutely not.
Okay, good. I was willing to reconsider my vote.
On the agenda is has staff comments.
Have a good weekend.
You're the best staff comment.
Very, very pithy.
Have a good weekend, is that what you said? You didn't say adjourned?
I don't adjourn.
He doesn't adjourn.
You can draw a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
There we go.
Look at that, my first motion.